Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Geisler. I'm the project manager for the Corps of Engineers with the Lake Okeechobee System Operating Manual effort that we're embarking on right now. I want to welcome everybody for coming out to this meeting. We're out here to hear from all of our stakeholders and the public as we embark on this process. It's good to see a lot of people out here. I'll jump straight into the presentation. Most of these meetings, we've had Lieutenant Colonel Reynolds or Colonel Kelly here. They couldn't make it today. They're up in DC, so they send regrets. But you get stuck with me and some other folks on our team, so we'll do our best to try to cover. So just a quick little background, everybody probably already knows all this, but for those who may not, the Lake Okeechobee is part of the Central and Southern Florida Project, and it's surrounded by Herbert Hoover Dyke, which is also considered part of that project. Both of those things, the Dyke and the whole project itself, were implemented back in the mid-part of the 20th century in response to several deadly storms that caused flooding around the lake. The Corps of Engineers operates and maintains the lake and the Herbert Hoover Dyke, as well as the structures leading from the lake itself, as well as other parts of the Central and Southern Florida Project, along with our sponsor, the South Florida Water Management District. The way we operate the lake, if you're not aware, is through an operating manual, which is developed through a public process. And that's what we're here to start today, is that public process, to look at a brand-new schedule for the lake. So what are we doing specifically? We're reviewing operations on the lake, and that will end up resulting in an operational plan, which will be documented in a brand-new system operating manual. So the main point is that the lake is currently operated under LORS 2008. This is not an update to LORS. This is a brand-new effort. Everything is open. We're not starting and making updates to that plan. We're looking at everything. So that's why it's very important that we hear all of the input from all of our stakeholders and all the public, so that'll help us really develop what this new operating plan is going to look like. Another key point is this is an operational study. It is not going to be recommending any new infrastructure, so we're not going to be recommending any new canals or structures, any conveyance, things like that. However, what we are planning on doing as part of this effort is looking at new infrastructure that's being developed and constructed under SERP, the Cumberland Riverways Restoration Plan, things like the C-43 reservoir, C-44 reservoir. C-43 reservoir. Why are we doing this effort right now? There's two major reasons that are driving us to move forward with this effort at this point. The first being back when LORS 2008 was developed, there were two key points that would trigger in looking at a new regulation schedule, and those were completion of the Herbert Hoover Dyke rehabilitation, which is scheduled to be completed in 2022, and completion of several of the SERP projects that I mentioned, C-43 and C-44. All of that stuff is happening within the next few years, so it makes this the perfect time to start working on a new operational plan for the lake. The other important thing that just happened recently was in the Water Resources Development Act 2018, the Corps was given specific new authority to look at the lake regulation schedule in conjunction with completion of Herbert Hoover Dyke, as well as to look at SERP infrastructure that may influence how the lake operates within the entire system. And that order of authorization is partly in response to the large discharges that we've been seeing to the coast, as well as the algae issues that everybody's heard about and possibly experienced over the last couple of years. So if everyone is aware, this is a NIPA scoping meeting under the National Environmental Policy Act. This governs the way we do all of our business, federal government. What NIPA requires is that for any federal actions, we look at the impacts of any project that we do on the human environment. So the way we do that is documenting those impacts through either an environmental assessment or an environmental impact statement, which will be part of this effort as well. This is just the first part of that NIPA process. These are the scoping meetings, as I stated, and there'll be multiple different NIPA interactions as we go, as we develop either of these types of documents. So the timeline for this effort, as you can see from this slide, is about four years. Along that timeline, there are multiple phases that we'll be going through. This is, as I said, the first phase, and that's the public input and planning. So that's why we're out here, collecting all of the input from everyone, to kind of develop a framework for how we want this effort to move along. As part of that as well, we'll be having multiple public workshops, starting in May, and then following those up in August. And what those will do is allow us to take all of the comments that we hear at these meetings, develop some responses, develop information where we see gaps, that people need to have information to understand. We'll bring that back out, along with some high-level alternatives. So if we hear things like "hold the lake at ten and a half," that's something we can look at as a screening level model, bring that information back out for everyone to see. How does something like that actually impact the lake and the system that it surrounds? Then we'll develop through those workshops our first set of alternatives for how we want to run the lake in the coming years. And part of what we're going to be doing during alternative development is looking at several different increments for lake operations, and those will coincide with the new infrastructure that's coming online. So as I stated, Herbert Hoover Dyke, as well as C-44, will be completed and ready to go at the end of 2022, early 2023, so we want to have an operating plan that takes those features into account. But then we'll have C-43 coming online a year or so later. We want to be able to have operations for the lake that take into account that additional storage in the system, so we can have a schedule ready to go as soon as that new infrastructure comes online. We also want to look at potential future increments that include things like the EA reservoir, as well as several other of the SERP planning studies that are currently ongoing. But that will enable us to get out in front of things and not have to come back out here and do operational meetings to develop plans on the fly as we go. So I think this would be a good way to move forward for everyone. As we are developing those alternatives and analyzing those, we'll come back out and hold more workshops to present the results of computers modeling, as well as data, for each of those different alternatives, and present that to everyone who's interested in participating to help us make a decision on what the best operating plan is going to be, to document in that system operating manual. Once all of that is documented, we'll send out the draft system operating manual, as well as the NIPA document for public review, take comments on that, and finalize the document before a record of decision is signed at the end. So key point from this is there's going to be lots of public and stakeholder involvement throughout this process. We want to hear your voices. If you want to be part of this, please come out, attend these meetings, make your voices heard, so we can take that into account as we all move forward in this process together. One thing I do want to mention, which I know Colonel Reynolds and Colonel Kelly both touch on when they've done the opening, is that this is a four-year process. However, that doesn't mean that we're not already looking at doing things a little bit differently under our current regulation schedule. So we are looking at the flexibility under that current schedule to try to address some of the concerns that we've heard from the public and our stakeholders over the past several months. So that is a parallel process outside of this, but very closely related, but something that will allow us to address some of the concerns that we're hearing right now without having to wait four years to get any kind of result. Okay. And this slide just kind of shows the multiple different stakeholder interests. Lots of people account on the lake from lots of different reasons, whether it be for flood protection, whether it be for water supply, whether it be for recreation. There's just lots of different interests, and not all of those different interests require the same lake operations. So that's part of what we have to try to balance as we work through this process, is to figure out how we can address all of the different considerations that go with the operations of the lake. All right. So there are several things, as we're hearing comments, that would really help us as we're developing the scope for this effort, and those things are what issues are important to you? What study outcomes would you like to see out of this effort? And how would you measure success at the end of this, once we have a new operating plan in place? Now, feel free, make any comments that you want, but these are just things that would help us as we're putting together the framework for the scope moving forward. And this is not your only opportunity to provide comments during the scoping period. There are multiple different ways, whether you want to make a public comment here or provide us a written comment today. You can do that. You can also send written comments to the address shown up here, Dr. Anne Hodgson, who's our environmental lead for this effort. You can also send email comments to the address above, lakeocomments@usasarmit.mil. And that email address will be available throughout this effort, and we'll be taking any kind of input through that email address over the next four years. I do want to highlight, though, that for the scoping period itself, comments, we'll take those until March 31st. Then after that, we won't be taking any more scoping comments. That doesn't mean we won't be taking comments, that's just for the scoping phase. That concludes my little diatribe. So now we get to the part that most people came here is to actually do the public comments, and for that, I'm going to turn it over to Jason Engel, who is the branch chief for Water Resources Engineering Branch with the Engineering Division in Jacksonville.
Thank you, Tim. Ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. Thanks for coming out for this meeting today. I think Tim covered most of the basics on why we're here. I just wanted to cover a couple of things, and then we're going to have a public comment period. Obviously, it's important that your voice is heard. This is just one way that you can do that. If you submit something in writing to us today, or if you email us, or if you mail something in, or if you speak at the microphone today, on the record, it all counts the same way. We're here to listen. Right now, we're in the scoping phase, so we're absorbing the information. This isn't really a question-and-answer period. We'll come back in May, when we're doing those workshops and answer all the questions. But right now, we're taking the comments. We're going to go away, formulate the answers to all the questions. Everyone's question will get answered. All the questions that are being asked today are on the record, and will be answered through the course of the NIPA process. So we've got some elected officials that we're going to call up first, and then we have about 10 people that have asked to speak today. And so what I'd ask you to do is come up to the microphone, identify yourself and any group that you're affiliated with, and ask in about two minutes for comments, though I'd say that with only 10 people, we have enough time for a little extra if someone wants to say something more. Some of the other meetings, we've had to limit that. Like I said, if you have extensive comments and you'd rather submit them in writing, that's an option as well. So the first person that I would call up is Fred Siegel, Chair, Broward Soil and Water
Good afternoon. I don't think I really need to raise the microphone up, but I'm Fred Siegel. I'm the Chair of the Broward Soil and Water Conservation District, and also the President of Broward County Farm Bureau. I want to start by thanking you for holding these meetings around the area. Now, any new regulation schedule feels needs to balance all project purposes: flood control, water supply, recreation, navigation, environmental effects to fish and wildlife, and they definitely need to be based on sound science. The reduction of flood releases to the estuaries is important, but should not be the only objective of lake management. The critical project purposes cannot be met by simply artificially lowering the level of Lake Okeechobee to some arbitrary stage, like 10 and a half feet every year, as some have suggested, or by allowing prolonged excessive high stages during wet years. Lake navigation starts to be restricted at a stage of about 12 and a half foot, and particularly impacts recreational voters who don't always use canals. The recent updated Lake Okeechobee Regulation Schedule Biological Opinion from 2018 confirms that excessive low lake levels can also adversely affect habitat and endangered species. Future economic and environmental needs of all South Florida, including inland rural communities, will only be accomplished through development of a balanced schedule in which all project purposes are addressed. Because the precarious condition of the Herbert Hoover Dyke, when the current schedule was adopted, water supply benefits had to be sacrificed, and the protections established in the WRDA 2000 for SERP were not able to be honored. The new schedule must accommodate future water supply needs and SERP projects that will be coming online, with a schedule in place, such as the C-43 reservoir, the C-44 reservoir and stormwater treatment area, and the Central Everglades Plan. Therefore, the water supply protections required of all SERP projects must be accommodated with any new lake schedule. The Corps should take the time necessary to perform comprehensive analysis in order to produce a schedule that is responsive to all future needs of the region, based on sound science, and not hurried because of political pressures.
Thank you, sir. Next would have Lee Pedron for Marco Rubio's office. Thank you, ma'am. Next, I have Burton Lamont.
My name is Burton Lamont. My family has lived in Florida for over 100 years, and on the south shore of Jupiter Island for over 40 years. I'm a U.S. Army veteran, and I'm thrilled that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is seeking public input to use in preparing the Lake Okeechobee System Operating Manual, that will give proper priority to the public health. The new manual will not propose improvements to the quality of the water in Lake Okeechobee. Result is that the harm to public health currently caused by discharges of water from Lake Okeechobee to the St. Lucie River and the Indian River Lagoon will continue if the discharges continue. Overwhelming evidence of harm to public health from discharges of polluted freshwater from Lake Okeechobee to the St. Lucie River and Indian River Lagoon supports the demand that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers stop the discharges, no matter what the consequences to agriculture tribes and any others, a serving entitled to pollute Lake Okeechobee, draw water from Lake Okeechobee, or both. Neither agriculture tribes nor any others have an entitlement to harm the public health of the people living east of Lake Okeechobee. Geography and geology show that a natural separation exists between St. Lucie River and Indian River Lagoon to the east, and Lake Okeechobee to the west. The St. Lucie River and Indian River Lagoon do not contribute to the pollution of Lake Okeechobee, and the pollution of Lake Okeechobee should not be allowed to continue to pollute the St. Lucie River and Indian River Lagoon, and thereby continue to harm the public health of people living east of Lake Okeechobee. I thank the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the opportunity to speak at this meeting.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Monica Hands. I'm here today representing the Realtors of the Palm Beaches and Greater Fort Lauderdale as the Vice President for the Eastern Broward Regional Board. It is no secret that Florida's waterways are the most precious natural resource. In Broward County, tourists from all over the world flock to our beaches to enjoy the beautiful water, white sand, and intracoastal boating. People from across the country dream of moving to South Florida to live in paradise, and after they visit, many decide to make it their home. However, over the past decade, we as Realtors have seen a troubling trend when discharges occur and toxic algae flows from the Lake Okeechobee. We receive phone calls from potential buyers backing out of deals because they turn on the national news and see river of green. This in turn is causing a negative effect, impact, a negative impact, excuse me, on local economies and the real estate markets that help support them. As members of Florida Realtors with over 187,000 active members, we support less releases coming from Lake Okeechobee. My question to the Army Corps of Engineers, has the Corps conducted hydraulic modeling that would show the maximum level, maximum water level on Lake Okeechobee? Water managers are comfortable with, excuse me, the complete rehabilitation of the Hoover Hoover Dyke. We thank you for your time and commitment to solving this crisis.
Thank you. Next, Caroline Carrera.
Hello. My name is Caroline Carrera, and I'm here representing the Realtor Association of Palm Beach and Greater Fort Lauderdale, and one of the corporate board of directors. When you think of Florida, what is the first thing that comes to mind? I venture to say most people would say our water, but weather would be a close second. The weather and the water are the two main reasons I moved here from New York to South Florida after coming from London when I moved to America in 1995. I stepped foot on South Beach in February and said, "That's it. This is my new home." We want to continue to hear stories like that, but the alarming trend of toxic algae discharges from Lake Okeechobee has the potential to stop people from moving to South Florida. Even in Broward County, we are concerned with the amount of water being discharged to the east of Lake Okeechobee. When toxic algae flows from the lake, there is a negative impact on the real estate market in South Florida. As members of Florida Realtors with over 187,000 active members, we support less discharges from Lake Okeechobee. My question to the Army Corps is, what amount of discharges would result in the possibility of Broward County seeking, seeing toxic algae flow down our rivers and canals? We thank you for your time and commitment to solving this crisis, and I'd like to submit this letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and I'll caution ahead of time, I'm not sure I can read the last name, but Jason Toomes.
Thomas.
Thomas. Okay, thank you.
Hello. So I'm a third-generation South Floridian. Family moved here back in the 20s. I went to school on the West Coast. I have family on the West Coast. I live here on the East Coast. It's very troubling what I've seen with those, the toxic algae blooms related to the discharges from Lake Okeechobee. I'm not a scientist, I'm just a regular guy who's seen his environment fall apart, and it seems to be more, the cause of it is agriculture, commercial operations, and overdevelopment, and then us. Seems to me that the Army Corps, who is responsible for the water, the flooding, the controlling of the flooding and the water levels, there's a lot of, like I've seen on the presentation, there's a lot of players at stake here that influence decisions. And I'm just hoping that we can come around, where you guys consider more of just, not just the flooding issues, but also the nutrient flows, the pollution. I understand the reservoirs that we talked about, but you know, to accommodate or take out those nutrients. And I don't think that it's going to do it. From what I understand, the reservoir is too deep, plants can't grow, can't filter that nutrient pollution, the phosphorus and nitrogen. So maybe solutions in mechanical operations, like, you know, clean plants of some kind, stations throughout the state to help take the nutrients out of the water. That's a Band-Aid, really, but what we really need is federal laws, state laws, to stop the pollution, get it out of the water. So that's my two cents. Thanks for listening. Speak.
Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Karen Holland. I live in Palm Beach County. I came all the way just so I could see what's going on and make a few commentaries, but I like what Burton said, and I don't know where he is, and Jason, I think you all did a good job. Well, not bad. I'm glad you're all supporting, or at least giving an idea of what we all came here for, I believe, which is, what are you doing? What are you doing to the environment? And how can you guarantee that what you're doing here is going to help or hurt? I mean, you know the flooding. I've read Zora Neale Thirteen, I think her name is, book about the floods in the 1920s. And I said, "Is that who she was?" Yeah. And it killed a lot of people, but I don't really think that's going to happen. I am an environmentalist. In my heart, I speak for all the animals and the birds, and even the alligators and crocodiles and the Everglades. They need a voice.
And the people.
And the people, yeah, the people too. Yeah. We do have a lot of people moving down to Florida, and that's, I don't know, kind of a controversy for me. And I also have relatives who live just off the St. Lucie River, maybe not a mile off of the river, and it affects them. I'm really concerned about their health and well-being, as well as everybody here who lives in Florida, who has an interest, I agree, in what's going to happen. Now, when I was looking at, I guess this is the one I hear, this proposed scoping, whatever that is, I have no idea, but it says, decision in, this is the one, so y'all can see, decision and public comment at December 2022, my thought was, well, if something goes wrong, how are you going to change it? What, you can take down the dam and just rebuild it? I don't understand that at all. And I think of Katrina, and I know that was a really old dyke or whatever it was that needed to be fixed, but I also have relatives there, and they're still waiting for their homes to be built, and that was a really long time. Now, maybe that's a good idea, that we have it built, but I'm not so sure about that. I'm really not sure. And once again, is there a guarantee? What kind of guarantee can you offer me that would not affect people that lived here, that the algae blooms would just discontinue and not affect people that live on rivers and also the West Coast, and create, well, I don't want to say more people to come, because we're number two now in population, that's a lot, and I see that the Everglades is being damaged as well, and I would like to see it all restored. And what else do I have to say? Oh, there was a picture over there, I noticed things, there's a picture over there with some guy standing underneath the faucet, which looks kind of funny. It just gives that impact that maybe somebody didn't look really carefully at what was put together. So that's my point. Is that a good point? Yes? All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I am Susan Caruso, and I do want to thank you for holding these public hearings this far south in the Water Management District area. We appreciate that. I taught at Fort Lauderdale High School for a long time, and somewhere in the early 90s, South Florida Water Management published a magazine called How Much How Good? And it was probably my favorite teaching tool, and I used it till the magazines wore out in about 2010, 2011 somewhere, and then I copied the one last I had. So I know what a cop- So I know what a complicated issue this is. And I also, these are the things that I also think I know. So just some general statements, and then I'll tell you what I'd like you to do about it. First of all, flood control is the major reason we changed landscape, not for water quality, not for water supply, but for flood management. Obviously, that's important, but it totally disrupted the natural flow and ecosystem of Lake Okeechobee. So the water bird, the wading birds, the prolific amount of species there just dwindled, and we can't afford to keep doing that. Also, that Lake, that the Kaluza Hachy and St. Lucie weren't supposed to be attached, but because of flood control, they were. Even releases of fresh water, just the fresh water would disrupt the saltwater habitats in the estuaries. And estuaries are some of the most diverse, important ecosystems on the planet, so just any release would disrupt that flow. But as a gentleman said before, the real impact is that we are sending out polluted water. And I saw on Bull's Sugar, an interview or a speech by, I believe it was a South Florida Water Management District Board member, prior board member. I didn't catch his name, but I could tell he was involved in the agriculture industry. And he said that if you live or play in South Florida, you're part of the problem. And I'll grant you that, but if he's trying to compare my culpability to the culpability of the sugar industry that has poured nitrogen and phosphorus into the lake mindlessly, greedily, when they could be implementing best management practices to reduce that, I'm not buying that. And I will use his word, that's an asinine statement. Secondly, the flow, so what do I, what I'd like you to do? I would really appreciate if the Army Corps will balance priorities. I don't think sending all the water out, keeping all the water in the lake is the best answer. There has to be common sense. So I hope you'll balance the priorities of everyone, not an easy task, and I don't envy you. And unfortunately, eliminating pollution isn't your job. Your job is putting that polluted water somewhere. And the best priority would be send it southward through its natural flow, give it time to flow, so the plants can suck up the nutrients like they do. And when you create the new reservoir, I know you're doing, I believe you're doing an impact statement on that now, that you'll mimic the natural lake. I understand that the new reservoir, because there's not enough land, is going to have like a 23-foot berm? Hello, that kind of sounds to me like the Herbert Hoover Dyke. And it just pains me, it makes me want to cry, that we keep doing the wrong things when we, that we aren't learning. So please, 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 let's find a way to, create less pollution, not your job, but any legislators here can help us with that, and that you will try to mimic nature as much as possible, because she kind of knows best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Carter. I'm of Broward County, and we want to welcome the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to Broward County and thank residents and non-residents for coming today to this important event. We appreciate very much that the Army Corps is engaging across the complete watershed and that Broward County is one of your important stops. We are going to primarily provide high-level comments today, because we're also appreciative that we can put in the written comments by March 31st. So I'll just touch on some key areas that the county is exploring as we look to provide input to this important process. You know, having this meeting at this beautiful complex in our main library gives us a view of our vibrant community right outside. And so Broward County, 18th largest county in the United States, home domain was 2 million people, over 10 million visitors each year. And so one of the critical elements that we would like the Army Corps to consider is the water supply that our 26 utilities use to provide the critical clean and reliable drinking water for our residents and for our visitors. So public water supply definitely upfront on our list of things that we're interested in, going back to your three questions. If we drove out west into Broward County, almost two-thirds of it is the water conservation areas. Those water conservation areas provide the critical recharge to those utilities, to those utilities that are providing that critical public water supply. We need the water conservation areas elevations to be considered in your modeling, but not just for public water supply. They represent Broward County's Everglades, an important habitat and connectivity of the greater Everglades ecosystem. From Lake Okeechobee, in fact, from the Kissimmee system, Lake Okeechobee, the water conservation areas, Everglades National Park, all the way down to Florida Bay. One system, one regional system. So both from the ecology needs for our county and the critical water supply, we ask you to consider Lake Okeechobee, the modeling, the whole regional system within the conservation area aspect. Just to give you an example of how local government, local utilities fit within the regional system, in 2007, the South Florida Water Management District developed the Regional Water Availability Rule, which set utilities' amount of water that we can withdraw from the Biscayne, our primary drinking water source here on the Southeast Coast, to a base condition of the early 2000s. And so that's what we reset. The purpose was to both provide for the urban corps' needs at the time, but also to protect the water needs, future water needs of the Everglades. So we wonder, as you look to look at different scenarios, future scenarios, we want you to take into consideration our base conditions, our water needs as you move forward. From a technical standpoint, we'd like to be involved in the modeling, both the selection of the models, how you plan to run the models, how they talk to our local models, and again, how they talk to the Water Management District models. Model world out there creates boundaries and creates input and information, so the important work that you're doing for the lake is going to be used for the regional system. To that end, you asked sort of what, you know, some key study outcomes or things to look for in the study, are some of the regional features such as SEP, Central Everglades Planning Project, going to be taken into account for? You saw the C-43 reservoir pamphlet out front, how about other reservoirs that are being planned or are being constructed as we speak? And then finally, I guess as we look forward, we want to have our level of service, of course, protected, the public water supply, but also we'd like to see operational flexibility as you move forward. Broward County's been at the forefront of planning for sea level rise, part of the four-count compact. We feel that with this proper modeling, we can be even more resilient in those efforts going forward. And speaking of going forward, we look forward, this is, we realize this is the start of a two- to three-year process, and we plan to be engaged from the start to the end. And just to remind you that it is a big region. You've taken the time to go out and listen to public comment throughout the watershed and ask you to incorporate that into your model runs and your analyses. With that, I close my comments.
Thank you. Next, we have Lynn Dixon.
I think I'll send my comments right, although I'd love to speak, but I don't really care.
Very well, thank you. Next, we have Darrell Roots.
My name is Darrell Roots. I'm with the Sierra Club, the Broward Sierra Club. I'm also a past member of the State Board of the Sierra Club, but I'm here just speaking as a private person right now. I'm a little nervous about this, you know? The Army Corps had to, decided to fix things, they were going to straighten out the Kissimmee River because there was a lot of flooding. Well, now, years later, what are we doing? We're spending a lot of money making it crooked again. You know, that's something that we need to make sure that we get it right now, because there's no turning around. I got involved with all of this because I wanted my children to have the same kind of quality of life that I did. Now I'm saying maybe my grandkids, after seeing some of those timeframes, maybe my younger grandkids. But the first thing I want to approach is, I'm a take people out on bike rides and hiking in the Everglades, and one of my favorite places is to ram around the Lake Okeechobee. A few friends of mine did about seven years ago, and unfortunately, when we got to Port Maya, you had to get off because the road wasn't done. So I just hope that at some point, the ram and that bike path, which is really a great recreational, people come from all over to go on that, it will be fixed. But talking now about the, my main comment is, okay, we want to clean the water, and this is going to help clean the water. Something Jason and Sue kind of said, but why can't we have clean water in the first place? You know, I think state, federal, county organizations, they need to have the cojones to make sure that we have clean water from first time. We shouldn't have dirty water coming in, whether we need cesspools or, it's not guess you or sugar, but it's all the cattlemen and phosphorus generating places. There are laws out there to make sure that that is covered, but we're not enforcing it. So you all that are in those positions, please do that. Now, thanks, and hope we can get it right this time, folks, because there's no turning around. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Gerald Ward, Revere Beach and Key West. It would be helpful to have a podium for a paper instead of just a simple microphone. I have been involved in water resources since I got out of the service in 1970, so this is not something new feeling in Lake Okeechobee or its tributaries. The process that you're starting is heavily into the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, and in the handouts, you prophesize that the Herbert Hoover Dyke repairs by the Corps of Engineers will be done by 2022. And there is similar discussions about the Kissimmee River Backfill, where you are the contractor to the South Florida Water Management District for a project that was initiated in '87, '92, and in an act of, I think, '96. We're decades late in accomplishing that project. You do say in your, one of your handouts, that you will consider the tributary effects of the Kissimmee River Backfill project, but when are you going to establish the regulatory schedules for the upper Kissimmee River section? That's above State Road 60, Lake Kissimmee's at that location, and all the way to Kissimmee and Tributary northward to Orlando. So there is substantial impacts that need to be considered by the rainfall that comes to the lake and your establishment of Lake Okeechobee discharges. I've been involved in a number of public works projects similar to the Kissimmee River Backfill over 1970, and the Corps does not have a good record of timeliness or completional time. Take, for instance, the Port of Palm Beach restudy, where you came in to do an environmental evaluation, NIPA statement, said you'd take two years. Five years later, you had finally produced the draft impact statement for review and then to the final. Nobody at the Jacksonville District was there. I have asked the public relations person at the desk, and she's said that she would prepare for this with all four people here, which would include their offices. So I would like to know and have presented to the court reporter, the people that are here at this meeting. I understand our current officer, Lieutenant Colonel Reynolds, could not make it because she has to go to Washington today, but she is certainly the senior person that should be involved in today's operation. Naturally, she's a three-year type rotation, but we need to get clearly a timeliness, and I think the schedule of three years is too high. I would also call your attention that last week, Colonel Kelly took the unusual, infrequent and unique posture of establishing additional operational flexibility in making large discharges down the Kaluza Hachy and the St. Lucie River. Paragraph 7-16 of the plan, which he cites, the Central and South Florida Water Control Plan for Lake Okeechobee and Everglades Agricultural Area, March 2008, pages 7-29 to 7-31, clearly say that this has got to be a very infrequent and unique action. So how many other times has he, or has the Corps implemented this since 2008? And how many times do you foresee it to happen between now and 2023 when you get through? So it is important for you to change your philosophy and make sure that things get done quickly and timely, and that they pull in lots of things that may not be available today, any water stages, regulation plan, other inflows.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Stanley Panaman, and I'm the Conservation Programs Chair for the Broward Group of the Sierra Club, and the team leader of the Southeast Florida Marine and Water Quality Team. I would like to thank the Army Corps of Engineers for holding this meeting so you could have public comment. The first thing I'd like to remind everybody here is that the Army Corps of Engineers is a government body. They take orders. They don't make policy. They take orders and then they make policy. Lake Okeechobee is probably one of the most polluted lakes in the United States of America because of all of the agricultural waste that comes down from northern Florida and from all the back pumping from the sugar industry of nitrogen and phosphorus into the lake. Matter of fact, there was a three-foot layer of nitrogen and phosphorus in the body of Lake Okeechobee. The Army Corps of Engineers has mandated that when the water level reaches 15 feet, they must release it. And because of that, their blue-green algae bloom- And because of that, their blue-green algae bloom is not going to stop. When the rainy season comes, and it will come, the level will get to 15 feet, and because they're mandated to release the water to prevent a catastrophic break in the Herbert Hoover Dam, that water is going to go down to Chattahoochee, and it's going to go down to St. Lucie, and this problem is not going to stop. Now, they're planning to finish the Herbert Hoover Dyke by 2022. Now, since 2003, I have been involved fighting or dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers on the Central Everglades Planning Project, which should have been done years and years and years ago, but has not. The plan to build a facility to store water south of Lake Okeechobee? Well, our South Florida Water Management District put a kibosh in it by allowing the sugar industry to lease the land that is supposed to be used for that. Now, we have many problems here in Broward County, none of which is caused by the county, but is being caused from the environmental impact from the state of Florida and the United States government. Now, I appreciate all of the input that has been brought out here. The real estate in Palm Beach County is being affected. The fact that the red tide mixed with the blue-green algae bloom that hit the Gulf of Mexico killed over 700 manatees, over 200 sea turtles, and countless numbers of dolphins, and millions upon millions upon millions of fish. And of course, people's health is at risk. I believe that we, as a group of citizens, must band together and protest and protest and protest what is being done to us. We're the taxpayers. Why do we have to subsidize the sugar industry that's polluting us and killing us from the back pumping of their waste into Lake Okeechobee?
Do you realize that last year, zero gallons of water were pumped north into Lake Okeechobee? It was illegal for sugarcane farmers to pump water into Lake Okeechobee.
Well...
Ma'am, you're going to have your time. Please, please.
Okay. I am going to take a little bit of exception to what she said. There will be a movie that's being produced right now from National Geographic that addresses that statement. But we're not here really to talk about what we're doing today. I'm talking about what we plan to do in the future. If the Army Corps of Engineers plans on completing their repairs of the Herbert Hoover Dyke by 2022, that means for the next three years, we will be forced to release water down the St. Lucie and the Chattahoochee, filled with toxic blue-green algae bloom. As I said before, we have to band together as citizens and make our voice heard. We have a new governor who says he will help us by contributing billions of dollars toward this. We have to force him to do what he says. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, Alex Gillan.
Hello. Alex Gillan with Bull Sugar Alliance. I'm an attorney for him. Just to address your point, ma'am. Lake Okeechobee created about a month horse of discharge... I'm sorry. Backflow and back pumping from the EAA created about a month horse of discharges last year. So it's absolutely not true that there's not back pumping and backflowing. I can show you the numbers. But...
We're not really South Florida, South Florida, and...
Ma'am, ma'am, please. Do you have your moment?
So thank you all. This is, being from Stewart, this is a warm reception, seeing you all and how much you all care about this issue. I do think, you know, the toxic algae that we see affects all of us because, you know, whether I talk to neighbors and colleagues down in the Keys, you know, they get customers and they say, you know, "Can I show up? Do you have red tide? Do you have toxic algae?" So it does affect all of us, the way we manage these things. It does hurt the 10 million residents a year who come to Broward County because they... A lot of people who want to visit Florida don't know the difference between Fort Myers, Fort Walton Beach, or Fort Pierce. And so when they see toxic algae, they think, well, maybe that's all the state. So it does impact all of us, the way we manage it. As an administrative point, I would like to request for our neighbors and colleagues in the Keys that there be a meeting in the City of Marathon. Additionally, I've heard from folks in Fort Myers and Sanibel that the meetings were awfully quick. They didn't get a lot of notice, and they would like to come. So I'd like to request that there be a meeting before the scoping period ends in either Sanibel or Fort Myers. In terms of completion of this project study, I'd like to know if the language in Word of 2018 is a floor or a ceiling in terms of completing that language, completing this study? I think from a good government perspective, it makes a lot of sense that we would have one Colonel, Colonel Kelly, the Colonel that just started to oversee the whole project. To switch horses in midstream seems like a kind of a bureaucratic inefficiency to me. I have a list that we put together at Bull Sugar that has six categories: human health and safety, community and recreation impacts, environmental impacts, economic impacts, sea life and animal impacts, and indirect impact. I'd like to submit that for the record, and I'd like all these things to be considered, please. Thank you very much. And then I have a lot of questions that I'm going to just put in for the record so that, you know, we as a community build the record and get a lot of answers with this opportunity for the Corps to respond. So, does the federal government have a standard for cyanobacteria? And if not, what agency would be the one to create such a standard? Does the lack of a standard by a federal agency impair the Army Corps' ability to manage for cyanobacteria in Lake Okeechobee? Another administrative measure. For the modeling, can you put the performance measures for the modeling on your website so that we all can see what performance measures are used in how we perform and how we define success? So when they run the model, they create the different alternatives. They're looking at how we define success. And what we want to know as members of the public is, what measures are you all using? You know, we would like to see modeling, the models be made public. Can you make the models public so that everybody could run the models? We all pay for them as taxpayers. Why not make them public? Please consider when discharging toxic algae and Lake Oke charges, how far and whether it's east, west, south, north, where the blooms or the plumes actually go and stop. It seems to me, you know, anecdotally, that the plumes are influenced by wind and tide, and they can, you know, change directions. But, you know, it's important for quantifying harm. You know, we know in Bathtub Beach, you know, we had to close that, you know, in Stewart 2016 because of the discharges and because of the cyanobacteria. But it's not clear if, you know, if that's going all the way down to the Jupiter Inlet or if that's, you know, going all the way up to Fort Pierce. And on, and, you know, kind of the reverse is true on the Fort Myers side. So if we could quantify, and it's true when there's discharges out of the Lake Lagoon, Lake Worth Lagoon, and probably here too, if we could quantify, you know, where these discharges flow, I think that would help everyone. Please consider fish migration and bioaccumulation of cyanobacteria caused microcystin and BMAA, and indicate whether that is something you all consider when discharging and when evaluating the harm of discharging. Please consider crop irrigation and BMAA uptake as microcystin. Please confirm that if there is a water shortage, if humans and businesses are in a conflict for water, who has priority, humans or businesses? In the water control plan, explain how the South Florida Water Management District controls water via the water shortage plan when lake levels are low, when that control is in conflict with congressional authorizations. If the Army Corps has a congressional mandate of recreation enhancement of fish and wildlife, why does recreation and enhancement of fish and wildlife suffer when irrigation and drainage do not? Please provide a legal explanation of how consumptive use permits are fulfilled at the expense of navigation and recreation when lake levels are low. Please explain why the environment has make-up water releases but ag does not have make-up water supply releases. Please explain how adaptive management and mandate in the Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan has been used, if at all, in the administration of the Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Project. Please explain when the EAA did not receive water or drainage requested. Please explain when the Clujahatchee or Everglades did not get the water they requested. What records are kept when cyanobacteria is blooming in the lake? What warnings are made to people in the lake, south of the lake, east of the lake, west of the lake, when cyanobacteria blooms occur? As far as the canals affecting boating? Navigation can be impaired by consumptive use permits. Please confirm that. I'm glad the Florida Farm Bureau is here because you all opposed the original provocation of the Senate Bill 10 to create the EA reservoir. And so from my community's perspective, it's a little hard to hear on one hand, "Don't take our water," and then to hear two years ago, "Hey, don't take our land, you know, to store more water." So, you know, perhaps if the Florida Farm Bureau had been more of a partner in water storage, we wouldn't have some of these debates right now. Please confirm or explain how flows south from Lake Okeechobee prevent saltwater intrusion and protect drinking water supply. On a personal note, you know, I've heard a lot of folks say that Lake Okeechobee is this and that, and that people in my community don't care for it. I think Lake Okeechobee is awesome. I think we've mistreated it in a lot of the way we've mistreated a lot of our waters. And so I think we should not use Lake Okeechobee as a reservoir. We should use it as a world-class lake that it is and really protect it. For each authorized use of Lake Oke, authorized from the Congress, please provide a pinpoint legal citation to where that authorization is represented in statute. So not just, you know, a bill number, but like a line number, like if this is for, and of the most recent statutes. So if this is for, you know, water supply irrigation, you know, please provide that pinpoint citation for each one: recreation, irrigation, navigation, enhancement of fish and wildlife, and flood control. Please consider adjusting other regulation schedules throughout the CNSF project area to minimize discharges to the exuraries, maximize flows to the environment, both in the Clujahatchee in the dry season, Florida Bay in the dry season, and Florida Bay in the wet season, as well as Everglades National Park. And to minimize risk of breach of the Herbert Hoover Dyke. Please confirm that the Herbert Hoover Dyke is safest, and the St. Lucie and Clujahatchee River are least likely to get discharges when the lake is lowest. Please articulate how much water is used for ag, natural system, and municipal water supply from Lake Okeechobee for the last 10 water years. Please provide how much water is drained from the EAA each year for the last 10 water years. Please quantify how much water has been backflowed and backpumped into Lake Okeechobee from the EAA and surrounding watersheds for the last 10 water years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Finally, Lynn Dixon.
I wish I had prepared something in writing. My name is Lynn Dixon. I'm a second-generation Floridian. My grandfather was one of the original scientists at Everglades Research Center, and the laboratory is actually named after him. So I have a lot of knowledge scientifically based. What bothers me is all the misinformation being spread. I know you would understand all the unfactual information that's been presented here. Some people have it right, some people really are off-base. I would love to see, you know, it's not your job, but to see the government present the true facts to the public. I'm hearing things like the sugarcane tribes, the agriculture are evil. The fact of the matter is that it is illegal for EAA farmers, which provide a lot of our vegetables, salad right now, all your green beans, your sweet corn, your radishes, your lettuces, everything, your vegetables you're having for dinner night tonight, they didn't come up from the northern states. They came from one of two states, California or Florida. Right? The rest of it's covered in snow. So it is illegal, this is a fact, for sugarcane farmers to pump water north into Lake Okeechobee. Okay? So when you all think that the sugarcane farmers, or, and you guys, and full sugar has propagated big sugar, it's actually all the sugarcane farmers rotate their crops with vegetables, sweet corn, organic rice. They don't have control over a pump that has the ability to pump water and pollute Lake Okeechobee. The farmers south of the lake do not pollute Lake Okeechobee. In fact, they have implemented best managed practices that have been wildly successful. Last year, they reduced phosphorus by 66%. They've exceeded the... There is a law. People don't think there's any laws that are, that regulate pollution, and there are. The EAA farmers are required to reduce phosphorus by 25% based on a base year. They have exceeded that requirement every single year for the past, yeah, how many years? Twenty-some years, at least 25 years. So when we say the sugarcane tribes are polluting Lake Okeechobee, that is false. Too much phosphorus did go into Lake Okeechobee 30 years ago. That is true. Today, that is not true. Where this polluted water is coming is from the Kissimmee River Basin. That's from Orlando, south. That's what we need to be addressing. That's where the phosphorus is coming that's polluting our water and causing the blue-green algae. Okay? It's not coming from the sugarcane tribes, as you call them. It's coming from 95% of the water inflows into Lake Okeechobee from the Kissimmee River Basin. That's the elephant in the room. We need to control the flow of the water into Lake Okeechobee. That way, we can control the flow out from Clujahatchee and the St. Lucie. Okay? So what I want to know is, how can we expedite our projects to store and cleanse the water entering Lake Okeechobee? And that's north of the lake. It's not south of the lake. The small amounts of water that the Army Corps has pumped into the lake have been off the urban areas, Cluestead and whatnot, not from the farms. That can happen in an emergency water. Hasn't happened in quite a while. So the misinformation out there, I'd love to speak with you. I do have some paperwork that can explain to you that big sugar isn't our problem, and the organizations that are spreading these lies are detracting from the information that people really need to make educated conclusions. And the water's coming from the Kissimmee River Basin. It's not being polluted by farmers. It's being polluted from the Kissimmee River Basin. I wish I had had something more prepared. I will put something right in the submit so I can have my thoughts a little bit more muted.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments. People had put a card in. I don't have any more cards. So that concludes tonight's meeting. We will be having meetings this week in Palm Beach County and in Dade County, all right, and following night, 6 to 8. And if you want information about those, you can see us at the desk here on your way out. out. As we said, you've got until the 31st of March to submit comments, and after that, we're not done getting feedback. What's going to happen after that is that we're going to close the initial scoping comment period, but when we come back for workshops, we're going to continue to get feedback and to answer a lot of the questions that have been brought up tonight. So thank you for coming out, and have a good evening.